Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the special meeting of the Board of Education. It is July 6, 2021. I would like to call this meeting to porter. Ms. Bowie, if you could call the roll, please.
Good afternoon. Stephanie Adams.
Here.
Nelson Boyer. Judy Justice. Stephanie Crable.
Here.
Hugh McManus.
Here.
Stephanie Walker.
Here.
And Peter Wildebohr.
Present.
All right, we have a quorum present, so we will be able to continue on with our agenda for the day. Speaking of, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Wildebohr. Is there a second?
Second.
Both Stephany's? Flanked by Stephany's. Who would like it? Ms. Crable, thank you for the second. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Agenda is approved. The next item on the agenda is for information. Today, we have a very important responsibility. We will be selecting the next Board of Trustees appointee for Cape Fear Community College Board of Trustees. And so we're just going to go over the overview of the process for today first. And we have five applicants that we will be interviewing this afternoon. So I would just like to review the process, especially for those of you that are new. In, we all have a binder that has questions, and I'm going to assign those questions to people just for ease of interviews, so we can keep it moving. And, oh, thank you. Ms. Bowie, just let the record show Ms. Justice has arrived. So I'm just going to go around the room, and I am going to assign a question just based on going through. So Mr. Wildebohr, we'll have you take question one.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Walker, you will have question two. I will take question three. Or actually, Ms. Crable, do you want to take question three?
It doesn't matter.
Okay. All right, I'll take question three. Ms. Crable, you can have question four. Mr. McManus, question five. Ms. Justice, question six. And if we get to seven, I will just close it down with that final question. So just any questions on assignment for questions? All right. Throughout the course of the interview, we need to keep it consistent. So you will notice that there is a question sheet for every candidate. We will ask the same questions. We do not want to do follow-up questions. We only have 15 minutes with each applicant. So it is, we will remind them of that as they arrive for their interviews. We want to get as much information as possible from each of our applicants and learn about their interest in this position. It's very important. And so after all interviews have concluded, we will deliberate and have a discussion regarding who we would like to see as the appointee. The way it works, it will be a motion to appoint candidate X. And if that person receives a second, there will be a discussion, and the board will then discuss and vote. If the vote passes, then it will be, that person will be the appointee. If the vote fails, we'll move on, and another motion will be made for someone else. Ms. Crable.
Question.
Yes.
So if somebody makes a motion for one person, then we really don't even get to deliberate about the others?
Correct.
Okay, is there not a better process for us to do? Because I'm having a hard time if somebody makes a motion about somebody, and I don't even get to give any feedback on any of the other people.
If it pleases the board, we could have a discussion. We could agree to have a discussion prior to the motions of bringing someone forward, but that would be group majority. It's up to you.
Madam Chairman, can I make a recommendation?
Please.
Can we possibly have a, like a task sheet or a numbering sheet where we vote on everyone? And then we turn that in and have that highest number come up? I think that's what used to happen. Want to understand?
That is, it was tallied that way before, but then I believe the policy was updated, and now...
But the policy is silent on, it says the board will vote. And I personally agree with Mr. Wildebohr that we need to have an opportunity to weigh in on everybody.
So meaning you would like to do a ranking?
A ranking, yes, so that we can do that. Otherwise, I don't think it's fair to all of the candidates, because we may not get to them.
Can I make that motion, then? I move that we make, come up with a ranking system for all the candidates that we tally, and that person will be, the person with the highest number would be the candidate that is chosen.
So...
One to five. That sounds good to me.
Second.
Okay. That is what I was about to say, is that if we, if we're talking about doing it in a different way than our policy...
Our policy says the board will vote to appoint one of the applicants. It doesn't say that we talk one at a time. It doesn't say that. Like right now, that's what I'm suggesting, that we're, we get clear right now. Well, going forward, we didn't. So I just think that we can possibly make something, we can make a decision right now.
Ms. Justice, there's no need for those comments right now.
Guys, 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 it doesn't matter what we did in the past. What matters is what we do today.
Correct.
And so if we think that we're going to rank them, you know, one through five, and I'm just throwing out a suggestion, one through five, and the person that gets the most ones is...
Whoever has the lowest score would be the appointee.
Oh, got you. Okay, okay. Yeah.
I agree, sir.
That makes it fair. Okay, okay.
Can I, so basically you would rank...
I'm sorry, I jumped in on your motion. Go ahead.
Basically, everyone will be ranked from one to five, all five people. Then we would come up with the lowest number from all of us, and that person would be the candidate.
So one, one is your top choice, five being your last choice.
Correct.
Kind of like a golf game.
Correct. So number one is your top choice, second would be second, third, third choice, fourth is fourth, fifth is your fifth choice of the five applicants. And then Ms. Bowie would tally the scores for us, and the lowest score would be the appointee. Are we...
Sorry, we can just use this form? The one that Crystal gave us, she gave us the second one. At our tables, there's two.
Oh.
There's one in our book, and there's one that Crystal gave us.
Yep.
There's one in our book, and there's one that Crystal gave us. So if we do that, Crystal can, I mean, I didn't want to jump on your motion. Is that what your motion is?
So the motion is to rank the applicants today for the Board of Trustees appointment. One being top choice, five being the fifth choice, and everything in between. Ms. Crable has seconded. Is there any other discussion?
Thank you.
This.
Would you just write this?
The white sheet that is on your...
It's not a tally sheet. It says you can just write the numbers right next to their name. Right.
Okay.
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five.
Yes, it, yes.
Mr. McManus, did you have a comment also?
I think we should.
Yes.
So we don't have to make a motion to discuss.
We can just agree to discuss.
We'll just be done and discuss.
And then we'll vote?
And then we vote, and then we, okay.
By tally. Okay, great. All right, so the motion is to rank the applicants. There is a second. We have had discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All right, motion passes, six to zero. All right. Next item on the agenda, actually, we are a couple of minutes ahead, are the interviews for the Cape Fear Community College Board of Trustees. Our first interview is scheduled for 2:15, and so...
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Can we have a moment to just talk a little bit about our thoughts on the process at all? Or is that not...
No, that's fine, as long as let's hold off before we admit. I just wanted to see if he was here or not, so.
Okay.
Is our, is our first person here? Okay, all right, that's fine. Yes, if you would like to make a comment.
Yeah, so I did some homework on everybody that is currently on the Board of Trustees, looking at their skill sets and their past experience. The, my thoughts were that it's, these people are all very well-known in our community, and very, they have varying skill sets that make them perfect for what they're doing. But I really wanted us to, and this is just my opinion, wanted us to think about what, what skill set might be missing on this board that this new candidate will be representing the New Hanover County Board of Education and New Hanover County Schools in the best light for everything that we do. Not just maybe in one targeted area, but who has that? And so, and we were able to, you know, read everybody's cover letter, and we were able to read everybody's resume and curriculum vitae. We were able to read all that. So we've got that in our head, and then we're going to answer the questions. So that's just what I wanted to just throw that out to folks, to be looking at what's in our best interest, and not make it like, you know, who do we like better? You know, just from work that we might have done with them in the past.
Yes.
Can you hear me? Am I not doing it right here? Thank you.
Is that better?
Yeah. I mean, that's just a given, and that's what I had been hoping the last couple of times we did this, so. That's a very good point, by the way, Ms. Crable.
Thank you. Our partnership with Cape Fear Community College is incredibly important, and we do a lot of programming together, and that partnership wants to continue. So we do want a strong voice that understands our students, and those are matriculating to Cape Fear and beyond. And so just keep that in mind as we meet all of our candidates. I'm sorry?
Thank you.
Thank you.
While we're having this discussion, one other thing, going back to the voting. It just hit me, because I realize how voting works in many ways. We all need to do the whole five, and not just, does this make sense? That's a single-shot thing? Let's not do that in this situation. That's not fair to what we're doing here. The single shot is, to me, it's always worrisome, and that could be done.
Yeah, I think we, everybody needs to go one through five.
Yep.
And I think that's the only fair way to do it.
All right, my time is showing 2:14. Is our first candidate on Zoom? Okay. Our first two candidates will be Zoom interviews, and the third, fourth, and fifth will be in-person interviews.
Madam Chair, just a quick question.
Yes.
It is okay to keep our notes on this first, just trying to squeeze it in there.
Absolutely, yep. Yes. All right. Okay, good afternoon and welcome. Dr. Sosny, can you hear us?
Not yet.
Not yet. Good afternoon, Dr. Sosny. Can you hear us?
I can.
Hi, how are you?
I'm well, thank you. Hope you are.
Thank you for joining us this afternoon. My name is Stephanie Adams. I'm Chair of the New Hanover County Board of Education. We appreciate your time today, and your application for the Board of Trustees, Cape Fear Community College. I'm going to go around the table and let my board members introduce themselves, and we'll start over here to the right.
Dr. Sosny, hi. My name is Pete Wildebohr.
Hi, Dr. Sosny. My name is Stephanie Walker.
Oh, I am the third Stephanie, Stephanie Crable.
Hugh McManus, Dr. Sosny, welcome.
Judy Justice, yes, welcome.
Thank you.
So the way the process will go this afternoon, we have seven questions to ask you within this 15-minute timeframe. So please be aware of your answers. We want to get to as much information as possible, and we are just going to go ahead and get started. We thank you for submitting your application and your resume and letter of interest for this position. We're going to start with Mr. Wildebohr with the first question.
Again, Dr. Sosny, welcome. I'm glad you're here today. What skills, experiences, or attributes will you bring to this position?
Well, thank you, and let me first thank you all for inviting me to interview. And second of all, disclaimer, it's hard for me to be brief. Being a former superintendent, it's not a great quality that superintendents have, but I will try my best. Attributes I bring, I think, which hopefully set me apart are 46 years in public education, worked extensively both in the New Hanover School District and the Pender School District. I've been a professor and a superintendent in residence at UNC Wilmington, and have worked extensively with Cape Fear Community College in the past, creating programs and serving on advisory committees. And so I think what I bring is a desire to continue to serve children in our community, and an experience base of pre-K through higher education, and an understanding of the needs of public schools, the programs, the benefits for our children, for our families, some of the underserved communities and the children who've been left behind, and how the community college, working with both New Hanover County Schools and Pender County Schools, can enhance those opportunities for all students and all families.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Sosny. My question is, what do you see as the role of the appointee?
Great question. I think the appointee is a member of the board, is, as you serve on a board, and all of you, to advise and set policy and provide direction for the institution. But specifically, as one of your appointees, I think that I have the ability to speak as a K-12 educator, as a superintendent who understands the creation of programs, the problems and the pitfalls for reaching new students that haven't been reached before, and how we accomplish those things to benefit boys and girls and families who have those great opportunities out there if they just had a voice who understood public schools and the interaction of public schools and the community college.
Thank you.
All right, Dr. Sosny, next question is, what do you see the role of the Board of Trustee to the Cape Fear Community College? To Cape Fear Community College, sorry.
I think I just spoke to that, but I, I think that it's the role of any corporate board, and that is to advise, to set policy, to review the budget and approve the budget, and to supervise and evaluate the president, and to provide counsel for him. Also, to be the liaison with the community. And if I am your appointee, then I would expect to meet on a regular basis with you all, whether that's once a year, or once a, twice a year, or once a quarter, whatever you would prefer, to give you updates on important information. And to be a community liaison for the K-12 community that Cape Fear Community College serves.
Thank you very much.
Me again. What responsibility do you think the appointee, the appointee has to the New Hanover County Board of Education and its students in the school system? I think you kind of touched on that, too. We're like segueing you right through.
Okay, so if I understand the question, so it's, I'm...
I'll say it again. I'll say it again. What responsibility do you think the appointee has to the New Hanover County Board of Education and the students in our school system?
Okay, thank you. I thought I understood, but now I'm sure I understand. Well, the responsibility is to represent the needs and the desires of the children, the students, to try to create programs and opportunities for students that they don't presently have, to enhance their opportunities to be successful, whether it's in the academic two-year college transfer program, or in the career and vocational program, or early college and middle college programs, all of which, by the way, I've had extensive experience in creating and working with both in North Carolina and in South Carolina. And so then back to the responsibility to the Board of Education, it is to hopefully represent your wishes and your desires, which is, I would think, to maximize the educational opportunity for every one of your students, and then to keep you all informed of where we're going and what we're doing. If there's anything questionable or worrisome that I think my responsibility would be to speak with you and get some direction from you before the Board of Trustees were to take action.
Thank you.
Dr. Sosny, Cape Fear Community College serves many roles within our community. Can you articulate the different focuses?
Absolutely. Cape Fear Community College, by the way, and this is just an editorial aside, is one of the greatest gems in our, our community, as is the school system, public schools. But the community college really bridges so many things in the community. Programs for college-bound kids who need two years of lower cost and college transfer credits to help them be successful for a four-year degree. My experience has been in the past, and I'm sure it continues, that many students in New Hanover County take advantage of those opportunities. They also take advantage, I'm sure, of dual-credit courses through the community college, and so a great benefit to students and parents along those way, those lines. The community college also serves the business community. It also serves as an incubator for small business and new business. When the GEs of the world, and the Corning's of the world, and the mega-corpores, which is one of Wilmington's newer, large companies, when they have training needs and are out trying to recruit and hire people, the community college steps in and creates programs tailored to the needs of those groups. Now, having said all that, I think it's incumbent on the community college, and also, I mean, sure, to interface with UNCW and the other campuses and the university system to allow students to go that way. But I think one of the areas that is a great opportunity is more cooperative relationships with public schools. C-Tech is a great opportunity that I think has a lot of room to grow and expand with new ideas and some resources that are there. I think programs for underserved groups of students in the past, whether they're poor students, economically deprived students, or they're students with special needs. I think the community college, working hand-in-hand with the school systems, can, can create some amazing creative opportunities to benefit everybody.
Dr. Sosny, I think you answered my next question just now in many ways. But how do, how can New Hanover County Schools and Cape Fear Community College work to better, work better together to serve our students? As I said, I think you just answered a lot of that.
I did, I think in theory, but let me give you a real specific. A number of years ago, when I was a superintendent in Pender County, Eric McKeithen, who was the president of Cape Fear Community College, he and I met on a, on a regular basis, I think, four times a year. We talked about how could we cooperate better, and to serve my students, to serve his students and his faculty. We came up with the idea that Cape Fear Community College, at the time, had a program for the community in auto repair and auto body shop repair and auto paint. And so as we talked about it, I said, well, you know, in Pender County, we have a lot of students who aren't necessarily focused on a four-year college or even a two-year associate's degree, but could really benefit from having a skill that's marketable where they could go out into the community. So Eric and I did some brainstorming. We came up with the idea of creating a computerized eyeshop and a computerized paint booth for large vehicles, so that we could work on school buses and semi-trucks and trucks and trailers and things where they could not accommodate those types of vehicles in, at the community college campus. And so Eric and I put together a proposal. We went to the legislature. We met with the Lieutenant Governor. Long story short, we got it funded. We built the building on the Pender County School Board grounds, behind the bus garage. Eric McKeithen and Cape Fear Community College provided the professors, who came to Burgaw every day and taught the students. And the legislature paid for all the equipment and the ongoing costs for the supplies and materials. And we created an opportunity that served about 40 children a year who were non-college-bound, some of whom were special-needs kids. And I understand, all these years later, we have a pretty high employment rate from the group of students who've gone through that program. So a little more in concrete, a little less in theory.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Dr. Sosny, it is 2:28, so you have two minutes left. And with that time, is there anything else about yourself or your background that you would like to share with the board?
Just that, I'm very interested in this board position. I've worked in public education since 1972. I've been a superintendent in both districts that are served by Cape Fear Community College. I understand the interface between K-12, community college, higher ed. I don't have a single constituency. My constituency is all students, all parents, all taxpayers. And I think I bring a perspective that would be helpful to the school system and the community college. So would love to have that opportunity if you all deem it fit. And thank you for the opportunity to share that.
Thank you very much, and we appreciate your time today. And as I said, thank you for taking the time to apply for this very important position. And thank you for your service in many years in our educational system locally as well. Right?
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Have a nice day. Oh, if you'd like to, you're welcome to stay in, yes, they're allowed to stay if they want to. I believe it went in an email that they can stay for the meeting. Yes. All right, I believe our 2:30 is ready to go. All right, does board members need a minute just to finalize notes?
Change papers.
Or are we good to go?
Nope.
All right. We could welcome in...
Oh, I would like to thank Crystal for putting this so well organized. This is going to be very, very easy to do what we need to do.
Good afternoon, Mr. Shipman. How are you?
Good afternoon. How are you?
Welcome. Thank you so much for being here today. My name is Stephanie Adams. I am Chair of the New Hanover County Board of Education. We are glad to have you with us today for these interviews for the Cape Fear Community College Board of Trustees appointment. I am going to go around and let my fellow board members introduce themselves before we get started.
Thank you.
Mr. Shipman, my name is Pete Wildebohr, one of the board members. Welcome.
Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Shipman, I'm Stephanie Walker.
Stephanie, hi.
Stephanie number three, Stephanie Crable.
Hello, Ms. Crable.
And hello there, Mr. Shipman. Judy Justice?
Hello, Judy.
All right, so Mr. Shipman, the way this is going to work, we have seven questions to ask you during this 15-minute interview. All right. So, Mr. Shipman, the way this is going to work, we have seven questions to ask you during this fifteen-minute interview. We just want your honest answers regarding the opportunity with the Cape Fear Community College Board of Trustees, and I'm going to pass it to Mr. Wildabour to get us started.
Again, welcome, Mr. Shipman.
Thank you.
What skills, experiences, or attributes will you bring to this position?
Well, first, thank you for affording me the opportunity to speak to you. And I think that the literal answer to that question is forty years' worth of experience representing faculty members, students, administrators, including presidents of community colleges all over this state. I have a keen understanding and awareness of what the proper role is, and the proper role isn't, of the Board of Trustees of Cape Fear Community College. I have witnessed firsthand boards of trustees of community colleges across this state, including the Board of Trustees of Cape Fear Community College, not understanding the proper role of the Board of Trustees in accordance with the general statutes applicable to the community colleges, and as importantly, and at times more importantly, the standards for the proper role of Board of Trustees members in accordance with the SACs accrediting standards. I know that the Board of Trustees does not run the Community College. The administrators and the faculty of the Community College run the Community College, and the Board of Trustees does not do that. I know that Board of Trustees members cannot bring a political agenda to the Board of Trustees and seek to further a political agenda or the agenda of third parties that are members of the Board of Trustees. And I seen firsthand the impact to community colleges where Board of Trustees seek to bring a political agenda to the Board. I've seen it firsthand with Cape Fear Community College. It is time, not only with the Board of Trustees of this Community College, but the boards of trustees of our public higher education institutions in North Carolina, to eliminate politics as part of their personal agendas. This is an opportunity to serve. I have served in the past, was fortunate enough to serve on the Board of Trustees of my alma mater, UNC Wilmington. I understand what my role would be, and I would ensure that other members of the Board of Trustees of Cape Fear Community College are properly reminded of what their role isn't, so that this Community College can be all it can be. I fully understand how this Community College is funded. I fully understand the legislation passed in 2019 and 2020 that somewhat changed the methods by which funding is provided to the community colleges. I fully understand that one of those elements is a performance-based funding element. I understand that while we, Cape Fear Community College, have been at the top end of performance-based funding, I know that we can do better. I know that there is more demand than supply for the services that we can provide. Continued funding of enrollment increases is critically important to the future of Cape Fear Community College. So while that was probably a longer-winded answer than what you wanted, it's, my experience is based on forty years of working in and around public higher education, public education in the community college system specifically, and Cape Fear Community College specifically. So I think that my broad range of experience and knowledge, quite frankly, I do not think could be equaled by any other candidate for this position, or quite frankly, any other current member of the Board of Trustees. I've just had this experience in my career.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Mr. Shipman. So my question for you is, what do you see is the role of the appointee?
Well, Ms. Walker, it's fortunately defined by statute and defined by the accrediting principles of SACs. First, the principal job and responsibility of the Board of Trustees of the Community College is to hire the president and to hire other personnel as recommended by the president. Next, the proper role of a Board of Trustees member is to ensure that the college has adopted appropriate policies and procedures to carry out its mission. The role of the Board of Trustees is to understand the mission. And I would be, I think it would be interesting to know how many of the candidates that seek your appointment have read that mission statement, have read the general statutes as to what the powers and authority of the Board of Trustees are, have read the accrediting standards, one of which is that the Board of Trustees' job is to protect the institution from influence by external persons or bodies. Meaning, under SACs accrediting standards, the Board of Trustees is to be free of influence by Republicans, Democrats, independents, Optimist Club. They're to be free of influence other than what they swore to do as a member of the Board of Trustees. So, you know, it, it's not difficult for me to understand what the roles are and aren't because they are already written. What I think sometimes, Ms. Walker, becomes difficult is for Board of Trustees members to understand that while their job may be in part to create policy, their job is not to administer and enforce policy. That is the job of the college president and the staff and other officers that they appoint. And those lines have been blurred, not only at Cape Fear Community College, but other community colleges around the state, that for some reason, Board of Trustees members think they run the institution. They don't. And when they try to, they get their institution in trouble with the accrediting institution, whose job it is, is to enforce those rules.
Thank you very much.
All right, Mr. Shipman, we have about seven minutes left and four more questions. And, sorry, yes, one, two, three, five more questions. And this, I think you sort of touched on this. What do you see as the role of the Board of Trustee to Cape Fear Community College?
Well, Chairman Adams, you are a fiduciary, and I think everybody understands what that term means. Your role and responsibility is defined. Your role and responsibility includes, but is not limited to, understanding how the college is funded and trying to ensure that Cape Fear Community College maintains its competitive edge, especially with this performance-based funding in place, and that its enrollment increases are funded. Does that involve politics? Sure. That involves lobbying on behalf of this Community College with those at the state community college level and those in the legislature to ensure that if nothing else, enrollment increases are properly funded so that we can continue to meet the demands of the, the people here in southeastern North Carolina.
Thank you. So, Mr. Shipman, what responsibility do you think the appointees have, the, the appointee has to the New Hanover County Board of Education and the students of our school system?
It's a collaborative effort, Ms. Crable, especially given the programs that Cape Fear Community College provides for high school students. So it is a very collaborative approach, especially given where some of the funding for Cape Fear Community College comes. So we not only, as Board of Trustees members, are focused on public higher education that is delivered, but the public higher education services that are provided to students who are enrolled as part of the public schools in New Hanover County. So both curriculum, diversity and inclusion, all of the funding issues, especially to continue to fund those programs, it's a collaborative effort as a member of the Board of Trustees, especially as the Board of Education appointee.
Thank you.
Cape Fear Community College serves many roles within the community. Can you articulate the different focuses?
I'm sorry, Mr. McManus, I did not understand the first part of your question.
That's because my mic wasn't on. Cape Fear Community College serves many roles within the community. Can you articulate the different focuses?
Well, you obviously have the curriculum focus, which speaks for itself, whether that is continuing education, whether that is curriculum services to those seeking to get their degree. So you have the curriculum component, but you also have the economic development and work development component. It is critical that Cape Fear Community College be able to provide a trained workforce for industry that would wish to move here. So we must understand that while there are community colleges outside of New Hanover County, Cape Fear Community College is an economic driver for this entire region and must therefore provide the educational services that are necessary to fill the demand of employers in this region. Our region's different than Central Piedmont, who's funded, you know, their, their funding is much greater than ours. But as long as we can continue to focus on what the needs are here, I think economic development, Mr. McManus, together with the delivery of curriculum services, i- i- it is maybe the two most important components of, of this college and its Board of Trustees.
Mr. Shipman, how can New Hanover County Schools and Cape Fear Community College work to, work together to best meet the needs of our students?
Great question. First, we must clearly understand what those needs are. And I think at any given moment, Ms. Justice, you would have to concede that there might be blurred lines as to what those needs are on an individual student-by-student basis. This is not a one-size-fits-all kind of gig for public education, especially public higher education. Next, given especially the path that high school students can take while enrolled in high school towards obtaining a four-year degree, and with the cost of public higher education putting it beyond the reach of a lot of people, I think that there's got to be a continued collaboration between the New Hanover County Board of Education and Cape Fear Community College as to the delivery of services to kids enrolled in high school and the delivery of educational services that will enable them to put themselves on a more accelerated path, especially in those areas where we most critically need it here, health services. Is, I think, one of the most valuable contributions that Cape Fear Community College makes to our region is that we graduate students who are ready to go to work in health services and health sciences, and therefore continuing to understand the workforce needs versus how we're delivering those services is going to be critically important.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Shipman, for the final question, in these final two minutes, or sorry, one minute, is there anything else about yourself or your background that you would like to share with the Board?
Well, the final point I want to make is back to the diversity and inclusion. When I look at the number of minority students that aren't enrolled at Cape Fear Community College, when I look at the number of minority faculty members and staff members that are not employed at Cape Fear Community College, it takes me back to my days on the Board of Trustees at UNC Wilmington. That with respect to every hire, with respect to all of our recruiting efforts, I and other members of the Board of Trustees were insistent that we be provided information about the number of minority applicants that we had, the number that we interviewed, the number of minority students that were accepted, and our recruiting efforts to increase diversity and inclusion. So merely because I'm, you know, not a person of color, I think my career shows that I have been incredibly focused on ensuring that diversity and inclusion is a part of the everyday practices, especially for an institution of public higher education.
Thank you very much for that final comment. We appreciate your time to complete the application and submitting your letter of interest and resume for this position. You are welcome to stay for the remainder of the interviews on Zoom if you would like to. The Board will be deciding on the appointee at the conclusion of today's meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Take care.
Could I call for a break? Short, right, short one? Okay, very short.
Yeah, two minutes, just because we have all of our other candidates are all here and have... Take a two-minute break. All right, welcome back. Thank you for obliging that quick break. I would like to welcome Mr. Charlie Rivenbark to the table, please, our next applicant for the Cape Fear Community College Board of Trustees. Welcome, Mr. Rivenbark. It's nice to see you.
I just want to start off by saying it's unfair to follow Gary Shipman. He's trained at this.
So the process will go, you have fifteen minutes, and we'll start a couple of minutes later, since we started a few minutes late.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, fifteen minutes to get through seven questions, so please just keep that in mind with your answers and just answer them to the best of your ability. I'm going to go around and let each Board member introduce themselves to get us started.
Mr. Rivenbark, hello. I'm Pete Wildabour, one of the Board members. Welcome.
Nice to meet you, sir. And you as well.
Stephanie number three, Stephanie Crable, hello.
Yes, ma'am. Good morning. Good afternoon. I know him.
Hello, he's Justice.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. And Ms. Adams.
Thank you very much. Again, we appreciate your interest in this position, and thank you for applying and completing the application, letter of reference, and resume.
Yes, ma'am.
And so we're going to start with our first question from Mr. Wildabour, and we'll go around the table.
Again, welcome, Mr. Rivenbark. And what skills, experiences, or attributes will you bring to this position?
Well, I couldn't help but overhear some of the comments that Gary had made, and I see the Board of Trustees, much like I see city council or some of the other boards that I serve on, where, where we set policy, and the people that we hire carry out that policy. And I hate to refer to it as a watchdog, but you, you watch over. And you keep that, that ship sailing in the correct position, and if it doesn't, you don't go to the cook, you go to the captain. And, and I see, I see... And I see, I see the duties of a Board of Trustees to be just that, and they don't micromanage. They see it from a higher level, and they have to have great faith in the people that they put in those positions of influence and decision-making, and trust that that person is using the tools that he's given to hire good people to fill those spots below him or her. So Board of Trustees is not rocket science. It's, I mean, the way that it's been done over the years, it works. If you have a good Board of Trustees and, you know, the old saying, the chain is only as good as its weakest link. I'm sure there are people on Boards of Trustees everywhere and councils and commissions where there's somebody that may have an axe to grind or an agenda, and I'm not so sure that's something that's needed. I think you need to work together cohesively and set good policy that's best for everybody and then have it, make sure it's carried out.
Great, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So my question is, what do you see as the role of the appointee?
Well, that's a good question. It kind of dovetails with what I just said. I think that an appointee, you certainly have him coming from different areas of the community, and I think that while I'm not, haven't ever been on the Board of Education, I went to school, I had children in school, I watched very closely as principals and teachers, much like Mr. McManus, and kids that my, the teachers that my kids have, how they, how they work, and I think that coming from this, from this point, from the Board of Education, I would certainly bear that in mind as I moved through my duties and the subcommittees that I would be placed on, that, I mean, the Board of Education, that's where it starts. I mean, the Cape Fear Community College is educating our kids, and this is where they come from, is the schools and teachers that you all oversee, so I would certainly keep that close to my vest as we move through this.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
The next question, what do you see as the role of the Board of Trustee to Cape Fear Community College?
Well, I think that if you didn't have a Board of Trustees, you would have one individual person that was doing things the way he wanted or she wanted, and the Board of Trustees comes from different, various segments of our society and community, and I think it is important that they work together. You know, I've never been one to go along just to get along, and that's, I think sometimes that serves me well. There have been times when it came off as being a maverick or whatever, but I think a Board of Trustees needs to be cohesive and have a good understanding of each other's strengths and weaknesses and together bring focus to the mission of the school and relay that or make sure that your president fully understands that and carries out your policies and your decisions. Board of Trustees is very important to a school. Board of Trustees is important to any organization, whether it be a bank, a school, or whatever. Board of Trustees is very important, and I don't take this lightly at all. I've served on a number of boards in my day, and I've always served out my term on those boards, and I've been elected five times to city council, and I take that extremely serious. So it's not something that, it's not another ribbon to put on your chest, it's something that I take very, very serious because our children and a lot of these, a lot of these people at Cape Fear Community College aren't children anymore, and that's the beauty that I see in Cape Fear Community College. They train any and everybody all across the spectrum, and that's, for somebody that doesn't have formal education, I see probably more value in it than a lot of people who carry degrees, and I will be determined to make that as easy and affordable as a trustee member to everybody who wants an education. Education is your ticket.
Thank you.
Okay, tough one. What responsibility do you think the appointee has to the New Hanover County Board of Education and the students of our school system?
Well, I think that if you're going to be the school board's representative to the Board of Trustees, I think you certainly have a need, need to have a pipeline or open dialogue with the seven of you and anybody else that you see fit that I would need to be familiar with or they with me. I mean, I would hope that that's the way it's being done, and I don't know. I didn't do a lot of research on this. I know some of the members of the board, I know the president, and I know a lot of the instructors down there, and I think they do, I am extremely proud of Cape Fear Community College and what they've accomplished. I went there when it was Cape Fear Technical Institute, and I was proud of it then. It was kind of like a second chance then. It still is, but Cape Fear Community College has grown up. I mean, it's a, I mean, it is what it is. It's a fantastic school, but being an appointee from anybody, I wouldn't care if I was appointed by whoever, this, these are the people that you all teach that are going to be relying on Cape Fear Community College, and I'd take that very serious and keep in touch with you folks to make sure that we were doing everything that you all had envisioned from your, from your appointment.
Cape Fear Community College serves many roles within our community. Can you articulate the different focuses?
You know, there's an old saying that if you've got a college education, you've got a college education. People coming out of Cape Fear Community College are ready to hit the ground running. We have added, I say we, they have added so many certifications in the last 10 years, Vet Tech. I spoke one time to the graduating class of the nephrology people. I didn't know, I had to look up and see what it was. They, more so, in my opinion, than a degree from a, from a Division One school, Cape Fear Community College got a huge umbrella, and they, they send people out into the, to the, our area, our region, and people from, without being from here. I mean, they've got a trade that they can go right to work today and make a good living, and that is terribly important to me. People think that the dropout rate, we talk about that from time to time, what a lot of people don't stop and think about, the dropout rate for kids in that first year of college is phenomenal. They get in there and they, that's not what they wanted. Mom and dad pushed them there, or they got there and they didn't do anything. Well, Cape Fear Community College is like the trapeze artist with that safety net. They go right back into Cape Fear Community College and be a success, and that, to me, is the most important thing that Cape Fear Community College can do. They, we train our nursing school as second to nobody. I could go on and on and on, but that, to me, Mr. McManus, is the most important thing that Cape Fear Community College means to our community, that we're training the people. And I couldn't help but hear what Mr. Shipman said. I remember over the years working with Scott Satterfield at the Wilmington Business Development, and I know there were several industries that came here and they needed 100 or 200 of this particular kind of training, and Cape Fear Community College was there and was quick to put it in and train it so we could get jobs in here and hire local people, and that is, that's acting quick. And I don't think they'll ever go backwards on that. They know what, that's part of their mission, and as a member of the Board of Trustees, I would never let us lose, I would never personally lose sight of that.
Okay, Mr. Rivenbark, how can New Hanover County Schools and Cape Fear Community College work together for what's best for our students?
Well, I think that Cape Fear Community College, being here on the ground and having campuses scattered about, I think that they'd be blind if they didn't see the issues that you all are having, that you all deal with on a daily basis with your graduation rates, your dropout rates, and I know that there was a time when a child could go to Cape Fear Community College and couldn't get his hours transferred over to, say, UNCW, and that got worked out. And I know, I know for a fact that the school board at that time was kind of like a mediator between those two, because it was important for a lot of children, they maybe weren't ready for a, for a, you know, a four-year college, and that Cape Fear Community College was their, was their vehicle to get to that, and that's been made easy. I think that, I don't know what the number is, I think it's like 20,000 that you all educate here or maybe more. That's a lot of humanity, and they're not all going to go to UNC Chapel Hill or whoever, and Cape Fear Community College is there for them. And I remember, I remember hearing, I run a community service program, and I'd ask people, all of them, "Are you in school?" "Yeah," and back years ago, they'd say, "I'm at Cape Fear Community College." It was almost like they were, they were not ashamed of it, but they hadn't reached that goal yet, not anymore. They're, boy, they're proud of it. Go to Cape Fear Community College, and I think it's the leadership down there that's instilled that in them. So it's, you take Cape Fear Community College away from this town, Ms. Justice, and you've got a great big gaping hole that I don't know who would ever be able to fill that up. That's how important it is to this community, and I think the community recognizes that.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Rivenbark, you have three minutes remaining in this interview, so for the final question, for the final question, is there anything else about yourself or your background that you would like to share with the board?
Well, I'm nervous. I have never been nervous meeting in front of a crowd of people. But, but I am, because this is, this is important, and whoever you pick, select, I know it'd be given a lot of thought and consideration to, and whether it's me or whoever else is going to come before you, they've got an important job to do. I don't take it lightly. I know how important it is, some of the other things that I serve on, and, you know, I've been here a long time. Both of my boys went to Cape Fear Community College. My oldest son was in the first graduating class of the culinary school there, and I just, I'd like to help, I'd like to be a part of it, so, anyway.
Well, thank you very much. We appreciate your time today, both completing the application and being here today. You are welcome to stay for the remainder of the interviews, and the appointee will be announced today.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rivenbark. All right, board members, if you want to turn your tabs, finish up any notes that you may have, we will move on to our next applicant, Ms. Deborah Dix Maxwell. Please join us at the table, ma'am. Welcome, Ms. Maxwell. Thank you so much for being here with us today. Appreciate your time. So same situation that I just shared with Mr. Rivenbark, this is a 15-minute interview. You have seven questions that the board will be asking to complete your responses, and I'll go around first and let each of our members introduce themselves before we get started.
Welcome, Ms. Maxwell. I'm Pete Wildabour, one of the board members. Glad you're here today.
Hey, Ms. Maxwell, I'm Stephanie Ward.
Stephanie Cravill? Stephanie Cravill.
Hugh McManus, welcome.
Yes, welcome. Judy Justice?
Thank you again, Stephanie Adams, Chair for the New Hanover County Board of Education. We thank, thank you for the time that you put into your letter of interest and for sharing your resume with us for this very important position today. We're going to go around, Mr. Wildabour's going to start us off with the questions, so, Mr. Wildabour.
Ms. Maxwell, again, welcome here. What skills, experiences, or attributes will you bring to this position?
To this position, I bring a wealth of experience and knowledge. I sit on different boards, state and local levels. I have managed my own budget for the department that I chaired a team of people, so I'm familiar with that, with a degree in business, so I understand about board governance, rules, and policies from having served in different specters, and also bring something that the board is missing, diversity in it too, that must be said, and the caring for the students, and the caring that things will continue and get, it's good there, but we can always do better.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Ms. Maxwell, my question is, what do you see as the role of the appointee?
The role of the appointee is to be the representative for the New Hanover County Schools on the Board of Trustees, to hear about things that would be in the best interests of the students of New Hanover County Schools, or eventually also advocate for all Cape Fear students, but make sure that if there are things that are integrated that would be beneficial to New Hanover County Schools, to let the board or whoever that point of contact person be, if it's not violating the protocols of the Cape Fear Community College boards, or vice versa, bring back from this body what you see that could be implemented that would better impact students who might be attending Cape Fear or the community at large.
Thank you.
Okay, what do you see as the role of the Board of Trustees to Cape Fear Community College?
The role of the Board of Trustees is to set policy presented to them by the president, select the president, as indicated, I believe, a few years ago when Mr. Morton came on board, and also not be the watchdog, but just be with policies and governance and procedures, and also be that visible community person and spokesperson for, whenever you're on a board, as you well know, you are the spokespersons of New Hanover County Schools when you go out into the community and shed that positive image and illuminate what is going on there.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Maxwell, what responsibility do you think the appointee has to New Hanover County Board of Education and the students of our school system?
I think to the students of the school system to make sure that New Hanover County Schools is aware of everything, which I think they already are, that could benefit the students who are within the numerous schools here, and also, like I mentioned earlier, if there was something that the school system saw that could, Cape Fear could implement that the school system could not, that would be beneficial to bring that up if that was possible. It's always a mix when you're a representative on a, on a board, so I think it would be best just to, like CTEC, they've done, used to do, I don't know if they still do, used to take the school and do off-campus within public housing and different things, and that, and that helps the parents who were students who didn't graduate but attended New Hanover County Schools, so it's still helping the community and the students at large when their parents can teach them better.
Ms. Maxwell, I'm sorry. Cape Fear Community College serves many roles within our community. Can you articulate the different focuses?
Yes, they do. They have workforce development training. They also integrate programs for students to take college credits at an earlier pace, which is beneficial given the cost of college tuition. Right now, they're part of the program to help students, freshman students get their program. They've initiated a great program with UNCW for the transfers to roll back. They have some excellent non-traditional programs like welding, the lineman program, if you're not familiar. Through the Department of Labor, the average lineman makes $70,000 a year. There's only a 10-week entry program that they offer that gets you hired across the country, so they, they have some excellent variety of programs. I'm working with some of them now on the rail project because underneath at the back of the college, there's talk about how we will decorate that to entice the community to use it down the road.
Okay, how can New Hanover County Schools and Cape Fear Community College work together to serve all of our students?
I think both groups are trying, but unfortunately, there's generally always someone who's missing, so what we have to do is try and capture as many as we can and see through marketing or whatever what happens. I know at one point, a lot of students were in the GED program at Cape Fear who had not graduated from New Hanover County Schools for a number of other reasons, to see, you know, what, what ticked at that time. Also, the college credits are wonderful for students. The entry-level classes are great, and one thing we can do is make sure that when students leave New Hanover County Schools, they're prepared to go to Cape Fear Community College. There was, at some time, children had to take the remediation classes in order to get fully into a college class, and I'm not saying it's just New Hanover, but when a child is graduated from high school... And I'm not saying it's just New Hanover, but when a child is graduated from high school, they should have had the skills, knowledge, and set to go ahead into whatever program that they were, that they wanted to go into, instead of taking some sort of remediation.
Thank you very much.
All right. The final question. Is there anything else about yourself or background that you would like to share with this board?
Yes, I am a lifelong advocate of students from pre-K all the way to the college level. So this would just add on. I'm a board member of North Carolina Child, which shows my advocacy for the smaller setup to high school throughout the state of North Carolina. So this would complement that. I am very interested in the well-being of Cape Fear Community College and every student who enters the doors of every institution, especially in New Hanover County, and the schools that serve New Hanover County.
Thank you very much. That concludes our questions. We appreciate your time today and the time that it took to complete the application to be here today. The board is going to deliberate after the interviews are concluded, so you're welcome to stay, and appointment will be announced today during this meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
And your service to the community as well. Thank you. We are a few minutes early, but I believe our final interviewee is here, so if board members would like to turn their tabs, our next person is Ms. Rhonda Bellamy. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone.
Thank you for being here. Welcome. My name is Stephanie Adams. I'm the chairperson for New Hanover County Schools. I'm going to let our board members go around and introduce themselves.
Welcome, Ms. Bellamy. My name is Pete Willdebeere, one of the board members. Glad you're here.
You'll be able to recite this in your sleep. Stephanie Craybill.
The third Stephanie.
Hugh McManus, welcome.
Judy Justice, thank you for coming.
Nice to meet you all.
Thank you. You have been here for the entire time, so welcome. You've had the benefit of hearing everyone, so you get to be our last candidate for today for this very important position, Board of Trustees, for these application interviews. We thank you for taking the time to complete the application process and the resume that you submitted and letter of interest. We have seven questions. You have 15 minutes to answer those and respond, and we'll go around, starting with Mr. Willdebeere with the first question.
Ms. Bellamy, once again, welcome. What skills, experiences, or attributes will you bring to this very important position?
I bring more than 30 years of community advocacy in various capacities. First, as a longtime news director for a cluster of radio stations here, where I've reported extensively on both Cape Fear Community College and the New Hanover County School System. In addition, I'm the founding executive director of the Arts Council of Wilmington in New Hanover County and have, in that capacity, also been able to interface with both the public school and the community college and have been happy to do so.
Thank you so much.
Okay, Ms. Bellamy, my question is, what do you see as the role of the appointee?
I think the role of the appointee is to be a liaison between this board and the Board of Trustees at Cape Fear Community College. It's really important as the primary pipeline for Cape Fear Community College, I think, for the school system to have a strong voice at the table.
Thank you.
Next question. What do you see as the role of the Board of Trustee to Cape Fear Community College?
The role of the Board of Trustees to Cape Fear Community College is much as it is with any large organization and primarily institutions of learning, and that is board governance. It is the hiring of the leadership that is going to drive that ship, and you make certain that the policies and procedures that you have in place that are equitable for your entire student population, whether it is the primary or secondary, is reflected in the decisions that that board makes.
Thank you. Okay, so what responsibility do you think that the appointee has to the Board of Education and to the students of our school system?
Again, I think that the responsibility is to ensure that every voice is heard. We know that, we hear this all the time, and it sounds almost cliche, but you have to ensure that you have a diversity of perspectives on any board, whether it's the community colleges board or this board, and whether that comes through committee appointments or what have you. It is really important that the, these boards reflect our population.
Cape Fear Community College serves many roles within our community. Can you articulate the different focuses?
Much has been made, pardon me, of the importance of workforce development and the fact that Cape Fear Community College has been a leader in that, customizing workforce training programs for businesses that are coming to the area. I was told many years ago by a former Secretary of State here in North Carolina that people decide if they can live somewhere before they decide if they can work somewhere. And so with that in mind, we want to ensure that our workforce is able to keep up with the industry that we hope to attract, that will keep a strong workforce in the area.
How can New Hanover County Schools and Cape Fear Community College work together to do what's best for our students?
I think that we have to get away from the notion that we, we need to wait until 11th or 12th grade for students to become affiliated with the community college. And I'll give you a case in point. The Arts Council partners with the Wilson Center on Broadway for a Better World, where we provided over $100,000 in free tickets to children who would pass by this beautiful facility and never be able to go in, ever be able to afford to go in. More recently, we've established a scholarship program for kids that go through this program to hopefully be able to attend Cape Fear Community College. So it's that early intention, very early on, I think, that is going to make the difference between how we operate now and how we can operate in the future.
Thank you.
I see the news reporter coming out. This is efficient. We are rolling. All right. Your final question. Is there anything else about yourself or your background that you would like to share with this board?
I, I would just say that I'm a graduate of the Laney High School class of 1981. We're most famous for Michael Jordan. My parents are proud, were proud Willistonians. My two children are graduates of New Hanover High, New Hanover High School and the first graduating class of Ashley High School, and I have grandchildren in the system. And so it's really, really important to me that we continue to develop a strong primary program that leads into the secondary opportunities that will afford our kids a better way of life.
Thank you very much again for your time and your efforts to complete this application. We are going to deliberate, and you are welcome to stay. The appointment will be made today. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Board members, that brings us to the end of our interviews. Does anybody else need just a quick two-minute break before we get started with the discussion, which will fall under new business, which would be appointment to the Cape Fear Community College Board of Trustees since we've concluded interviews? Good?
We're good.
Okay. If not, I will open the floor for any discussion.
I would like to mention that I think that all of our candidates, they were exceptional. I mean, it's a hard choice because they all, every, every last one of them was awesome. So I think they should be just rewarded or thought, I wish we could pick five, I'll be honest. I really do.
They've got such good backgrounds, broad, extensive.
Anyone else?
Yeah, the, I was listening with a discerning ear to what homework people had done, you know, to learn about the Cape Fear Board of Trustees, because I had to do the same. I went to their website and I read their bylaws and I looked up all the people to see what their backgrounds were. So I appreciate the folks who did a little bit of that research, so they really clearly understand, you know, what they're going to be doing. One of the things I was, I was bummed about, that nobody mentioned at all Wilmington Early College High School, which is a huge collaborative effort, and it's been very successful, you know, for those kids that are getting the dual credits and getting instructed by you and Cape Fear Community College instructors. And some of those folks are ready to move into the workforce and some are ready to move on to four-year college, but the, and the one thing that I was, that I was very impressed with, there were three people that, actually, I think probably most of the people, were very receptive to reporting back to us.
Yep.
Because there's, to me, there's nothing worse than being on a committee, being on a group, and, you know, to represent somebody, and then you never go back and tell the group. So I made notes who you were, so whoever, whoever was selected, be, be ready to get an email, you know, at some point from, or a suggestion from our board member, our board chair. But yeah, I, I thought that folks went well, and I think that everybody there has, has a skill set that might be missing or not as strong already on the Cape Fear Board of Trustees, so that that's what I was looking for, is, you know, how do we, how do we complement? How do we add in to make that Board of Trustees better? Because if Cape Fear Community College is better, we are better. If we are better, they are better. So that's my two cents. Thanks.
Oh, and, and thank you for bringing that up about the reporting back, because that's been under discussion since I've been on the board. We do need to set some kind of regular process so we can have that discussion, since we are so intertwined. I mean, the schools themselves, New Hanover County Schools are constantly talking with Cape Fear Community College because we are so intertwined. But yeah, we, it would be good if we got a regular report on that, which we have yet to do since I've been on the board. It would be great. So that's something we need to keep in mind and bring forward, guys.
Anyone else?
I would just like to say that I was very, very impressed with all the applicants and the resumes. I mean, I think we got the best of the best that had applied. And I would like to say, I mean, you know, whoever doesn't get picked, please apply again, because I feel like we need people of this caliber, you know, helping the school district out. So I just wanted to add that.
And then just also point out that the caliber of the people that were up here speaking, everybody's got different experiences. And so you, you saw by their responses what their backgrounds were. So since they are also qualified in so many different areas, you know, just, just take, please take that into account. And also, as I said, with the community needs. Ms. Craybill did some research, and I probably, other ones of you have, of the members that we currently have, and we do need, we do need some additions that we have not had on that board, since I've been living in the community for most of my life.
I agree. I did research too, yeah. So it was very helpful to see what, what we have and what we need, for sure.
I kind of appreciated the genuineness of each individual candidate. They all had, if you listen carefully, there was a particular thing that they may have felt strongly about. And of course, I'm partial to the workforce development, because I think that, as we've talked about, beginning that much, much earlier, right down in the middle school is, is key. But I, but each one of them was genuine, and that was, that was excellent. That made a big difference.
I would like to echo all of that. Every single candidate that we have had the opportunity to speak with today is exceptional and brings something different and could fill a gap that isn't necessarily represented on the board right now. I think we're very lucky to have a community college of the caliber that Cape Fear Community College is within this community. We are incredibly lucky. Our students are incredibly lucky. And to have so many people want to serve in that capacity is admirable, because it's an extremely important role, and it is driving the future of Wilmington and the surrounding area, both New Hanover County and Pender County. So we appreciate everyone's time today and the efforts that it took to apply. And again, thank you very much. And if there is no other comments that board members would like to make, I would encourage you to do your rankings, and we will submit to Crystal, and she will share the final score.
And again, just to remind everybody, one would be the best, and five would be, you know, so we're all, you know, it's been a while.
Thank you for that reminder, Mr. Willdebeere. Yes.
So Lois is going to be the one that gets best.
The lowest score. Think golf score.
Yeah.
Think golf score. Just one other question. Are we going to put our names on these or not?
Uh, yes, if you just put, just for...
We do put our names on?
Just, yeah, I just put my last name on the bottom, just to have retaliation purposes. Is everyone done? Collect and give them to...
Is that through?
Thinking.
That's good. Oh, you use the yellow one. I'm like, now I feel like I'm... Is that why?
Who's got the yellow one? Come on.
You got a gold star, big squirrel. Oh, it is hard. They are good. Oh, yeah, we can give this back to, please give it back.
Yes. Um, yeah, we'll leave these with Crystal afterwards, so. Uh, yes.
Give it all back.
We can always reuse the binders. Thank you, sir. Thank you, thank you, thank you. All right. It's this way. How'd you get the dent? Ouch. Not fun.
Oh, yeah, those, those things are, I don't have one, but those things are hot. Those backup cameras are becoming very popular. I don't think they do, most of them, you have that option. All of them. You got one?
Crystal, would it make sense, should we take a break? Do you need a couple minutes? Okay. I'm going to just call, let's call a three-minute break, just officially, so while she's calculating.
Okay, well, that's good. There's always rest room. I know.
Yep, are we at three minutes? All right. Welcome back. Thank you, Ms. Bowie, for calculating our ranking system. And just also another thank you, I know Ms. Justice said this, but thank you for putting together all of our materials for this important meeting today. We, I would like to congratulate our next Board of Trustee, appointee to Cape Fear Community College, Ms. Deborah Maxwell. Ms. Maxwell, I would like to invite you to the July Board Meeting for the official announcement.
Oh, thank you for calling.
Thank you, Ms. tribe mark.
And Ms. Bellamy also.
Thank you to all of our applicants today. Ms. Maxwell, I would like to invite you to our next Board Meeting for the official announcement to the community. All right.
Please, please apply again, everyone else. Yeah, those of you, you apply, apply, apply again. I'm sure we'll have some things open up.
All right. The final, the final agenda item is adjournment. Do I hear a motion? All right, thank you, Ms. Justice. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? I'd just like to say thank you to all of your board members for your feedback and for your time this afternoon. This is an important position that we have the availability to select, and thank you for your time and efforts today. All right.
Thank you very much.
All those in favor to adjourn, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, we are adjourned.